I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you turn your mic on? Please.
We have seven members present tonight. I'm sorry, two members present. Is Chuck online?
No. Charles, are you online?
Eight members present. I'll turn it over to Ms. Slissert.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to nominate a temporary president for the running.
I nominate Cory Lloyd.
Second.
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 Are there any other nominations? Sir, second. All those in favor of the nominations being closed?
Second.
Second.
No, all those in favor?
Aye.
At this point, based on the fact that there's only one nomination, Cory is a temporary president.
Okay. Alright. Thank you, everybody. Right.
As temporary school board president, my role is to oversee the election process for the school board president for the upcoming year. At this time, the floor will be open for current board members to nominate a board member for the position of school board president. Once nominations are closed, voting will take place in the order in which members were nominated. Once a nominee receives five or more votes, the election process for board president will be concluded. The newly elected president will then conduct the election for the school board vice president and any other appointments that may be needed. And will also present for consideration the dates and times for the school board meetings in the upcoming year. Alright, we will now accept nominations for the position of northeast school board president.
I nominate Mackenzie Luke.
I nominate.
Second.
Nomin- oops, sorry.
Can I get a second?
Jane.
Jane. Alright, any other nominations?
Jim Wargo.
Second. Do you accept?
I accept.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Alright, any other nominations?
I move nominations be closed.
Second. Second. To all in favor. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Yes.
We voted on Mr. Luke first. He's not named first.
Alright. Jeff, do a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Blaisdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
No.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Ms. Merbilia?
No.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
No.
Forty-eights? Can you carry on? Motion fails. Motion fails.
Alright, roll call vote for Jim Wargo.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
No.
Mr. Merbilia?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
No.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Five votes?
Congratulations, Jim. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Alright, now moving on, we will now accept nominations for the position of northeast school board vice president. Any nominations at this time?
By.
Second.
Second. Jane? Do I have any other nominations?
I nominate Mackenzie Luke.
Do I have a second for her?
I think so.
Give you a second. Any other nominations? Seeing none? All in favor?
Motion.
A motion to close?
So.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion. Motion closed. Alright, so we will have a roll call vote for Aileen.
This is for vice president?
For vice president, yes.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Mr. Luke? No?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Ms. Merbilia?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
No.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Dr. Blaisdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
It's five.
Alright, we have, we have five votes. Aileen Rhodey, congratulations, vice president. Seeing how Ms. Rhodey was our treasurer, we are gonna have to open the voting for its, uh...
I need to officially resign.
Officially resign, yes.
And I do so.
You do so, okay.
That makes me angry.
Just so we're clear.
You have to hold it.
Alright, just so we're clear, section four hyphen four oh four of the Pennsylvania School Code provides that a person of the school board cannot hold at the same time more than one office. And since Ms. Rhodey was appointed as vice president, automatically now the position of treasurer has to be vacated, which she has vacated. And now we have to take action on appointing the treasurer. So we would seek nominations for appointment of the treasurer.
So we accept your resignation. At this time, we will take nominations and try to appoint a new treasurer. Do I have any nominations?
I nominate Jane Blaisdahl.
Jane, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Cory. Are there any other nominations?
Want to do it, Jane?
Yes, sir.
At this time, there are no other nominations. I make a motion to close nominations. Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Jane. We saw the vote.
By acclamation.
By acclamation.
Everybody agreed?
Aye.
Yes.
There's only one nomination, so you have a nomination.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, let's see what we got. Okay, we will be moving on to the calendar.
Just make a motion.
I make a motion to accept the calendar.
I remember us to make a motion on the president. I move that we accept the calendar as presented.
Oh, second.
Second.
Wait. What are the April dates?
Spring break, there you go.
Thursday, fourth. Thursday.
Alright. Have a calendar vacation on Thursday. During the spring break? I don't think, yes, it's during. Yeah. So we should be good.
Alright, can I have a voice, uh... Roll call? I mean, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Motion carries?
Can, can you what? Switch?
Instead of saying aye, can we say aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay.
Aye. Say yeah. Alright, we have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second. Alright.
We're gonna take, uh...
A little break here.
Unfortunately, a twenty-minute break.
Twenty-minute break.
Okay. I'll even cook. Alright, everyone, reconfiguring.
Here. And before we get started, if you didn't join us for the reorganization meeting, Mr. Wargo was named the board president for the upcoming year. Ms. Aileen Rhodey was named the vice president. And we have a new treasurer in Dr. Jane Blaisdahl. So congratulations.
Alright, um, agenda revisions.
None.
None? Alright, tonight, recognition of students and staff, we have none. Reports and presentations, none. Superintendent's report? None. Board reports, none. So we're gonna jump right into public participation for agenda items only. Aaron? Uh, star six, unmute if you are at home.
Hi there, Erin. Becca's Reese, my information's on file. Um, I just wanted to comment on what you guys are gonna be voting for with the high school H-back system, the phase three. I am suggesting maybe tabling it because I know when Trump is inaugurated, he has talked about eliminating the Department of Public Education, or Department of Education. So not knowing how those funds are gonna be allocated, or how, if we're gonna be getting federal funding, or if that's gonna be put on us taxpayers to go and commit to a job like that big, may not be like the wisest thing to do at this time. So I just kinda wanted to give that suggestion as some for you guys to think about. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin. Anybody else? Jen?
Just curious on, um, let's see, what's it, personnel, uh, number four. Uh, could you just explain that program? And are you still looking to hire for these, like the custodian positions? And now I see an instructional aide. Are you still looking to hire, like traditionally adults for some of these positions? I'm just curious, I just see, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just curious how it's working, um, you know, with students filling more of these roles? Or are you still looking to hire adults on top of, um, some of these students? So I'm just curious how that program was working.
Um, first of all, it's a great program for our students. We always, we do advertise, and if we have an actual vacancy for the position, we will fill it with, you know, an adult, um, you know, that's qualified, you know, for the position. But it's also a great opportunity, you know, for our students and to give them some work experience while they're still in school. And especially this group of students for when they leave our school district to be able to, um, work on their career. And we have actually hired some of these people, these students permanently, um, after we have hired them part-time during the school year.
So what does it mean with a, with the cooperating teacher? Does a, I mean, what does that mean?
We work with, um, the, the co-op program is a partnership and a program that we have. Um, and so they evaluate students, they make sure that they're maintaining, just like any other person would be evaluated on a position, actually, there's even more criteria. They also have to maintain their academics, and a lot of times they also have to, um, do their own self-evaluation and also, um, create a resume. So there's a lot of criteria that goes throughout the program.
Okay. Just curious.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. Yes, Paul Crowe, this is a question about the, uh, this Guaranteed Energy Savings Act. I was talking to someone just a couple of days ago who's quite familiar with grants, and they were wondering if any grants had been applied for, or if there was any grants that were being looked into as a way of financing this, because they were under the impression that this is the kind of project where money might be available.
I, I will let Mr. Fox answer, but we did apply for a grant, we actually applied, I think it was for a four million dollar grant, and we were not funded. Actually, a lot of districts were not funded, or they only received twenty-five percent of what they asked for, but we were not a recipient of one dollar of this grant that they had an opportunity for that would have covered this project for our district. And, and we still do not have plan con, you know, with the state, so with no reimbursement.
That the one you talked to Senator Loughlin about?
Yes.
And his response was?
Well, when we spoke, I know he said he would, they would look into it, but as of right now, he said there's no money and don't plan on any additional funding coming through.
Jeff, anything you wanna add?
I don't have anything to add from the prior meeting. We did apply for the facility grants, Dr. Carr's intention, we were not approved. There are, I get inundated with sales messages and calls every day about all these potential grant opportunities, and typically they're just piggybacking off of the state grant programs that are already known by business managers and facility managers. And, uh, when you apply for them and you go for it, but they still try to spend the money when, uh, even if you aren't eligible for the grant. That was a big problem during the ESSER era, the COVID era. And you get solicitations from those vendors who want us to spend COVID money, which is not here.
Anybody else? Question? Alright, moving on, we'll go to items for action. Minutes. Uh, any questions? It is recommended to approve the minutes as listed. Any questions? I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor, signify? Aye. Opposed? Alright, business, Mr. Fox.
It is rec... It is recommended that the board approve business items number one through four as listed.
Okay. I would like the separation on two and three for discussion.
Separation two and three.
And you have two and three separated, two and three. Two and three.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Like that.
Alright.
Sorry.
Alright, moving forward, we'll be, uh, voting on one, business one and business...
We don't even need a motion.
We don't even have a motion.
A motion.
A motion.
I made a motion.
Second?
Second.
Is that just item number one?
One and four.
One and four. We have a motion and a second by Katie. Alright, uh, roll call vote, please.
Let me, I'll discuss one just a little briefly. Uh, the, uh, the audit report was presented last meeting. Uh, number four, uh, we did receive a change order, uh, a final change order for the build and the turf project. Uh, this is for filled house asphalt repair that they were not able to complete prior to construction season ending, and, uh, it's a credit for seventy-five hundred dollars, which we will roll into our next summer asphalt program to patch, uh, the area that was damaged. Um, and, but that's the final change order of the project that was completed as far as the change orders and that, so, um, just wanted to clarify that.
What?
I'd like the separation on, um, item number one as well, please.
Can we separate it this way?
We can separate for voting purposes.
Okay. Well, I have separation on one. Is there, is Katie a second? Okay.
So when we vote, just vote on number one first and then vote on number four.
Okay. Alright, any discussion on business item number one before we vote? No discussion? Alright, can I have the roll call vote, please? For number one.
Dr. Blaisdahl?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Ms. Merbilia?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Alright. We all have a vote on item...
Sorry, seven, seven one.
Seven one. Uh, vote on business item number four, any discussion on that one? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Ms. Merbilia?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Dr. Blaisdahl?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Okay, we will go back to business item number two, any discussion on that?
Need a motion.
I'm sorry, a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Katie? Alright, discussion on item, business item number two.
Can we just get clarification about where the funding for both projects two and three is coming from?
Is this motion for two and three or just?
Just two.
Just two.
I'll have the same question for project number three as well.
Okay, number two, uh, money is available within the current capital projects fund, as I mentioned in the, with the previous meeting. You want me to go in full detail for both questions or hit it now for both?
Yeah.
Yep. Just give it out there for clarification and understanding and just make it so we're all on the same page for it.
As, as I presented the last meeting, um, the projects that are proposed, uh, will be approximately three point eight million dollars, uh, funds available for said projects. Those five point three million dollars leaving a remaining capital projects balance of one point five million. Now balance that's combined with general fund committed, fund balance of five million for capital projects, and then also what's in the existing capital projects fund. There's been, you know, reference in social media that this has been resulting in tax increase, and, uh, apparently I was not clear enough when I presented last meeting about the, how the funding really is being done. Long-term capital projects, just as you do with your own personal finances, should be funded with long-term sources or savings. Operational expenditures should be funded with operational, um, revenues, um, and if you're desperate in your household, you're funding those operational expenditures with a credit card. Um, the district doesn't finance operational expenditures with a credit card. We have good fiscal management, and we match long-term expenses with long-term revenues. Long-term, uh, debt service is the purpose for capital projects. I alluded to the fact that we would need a bond issue in the next three to five years for model capital projects, and I don't, um, I'm not changing that stance. We have projects with the elementary school renovation, we've got driveways and carways, we have a filled house renovation, we have a couple items at the high school, couple items at the middle school. My rough estimate without having any surveys done or studies done, uh, is anywhere from fifteen to twenty million dollars. Bond issues, uh, that's not a untypical size of a bond issue, or a fifteen to twenty million dollar bond issue, and that can be financed over a ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty-year time period. The current operational funds of the district, we use a capital projects transfer, uh, rainy day money, I'll call it, uh, for future capital projects, and that's budgeted about nine hundred thousand dollars every year. We also have annually a debt service, uh, right now, our net debt service is one point three million dollars. So we annually budget two point two million, and that is no different than what we did in years prior, and that will be the status quo for years to come in twenty-four, twenty-five, current year, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. In twenty-eight, twenty-nine, our debt service drops to eight hundred fifty-eight thousand, and it runs eight hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-five thousand in years five and six out from twenty-four, twenty-five. Again, long-term debt service being funded on an annual basis, smooth to not result into real estate tax increases because of one project. The capital fund transfer in conjunction with that net dirt debt service amount, those are the two things that we use to fund our long-term capital project needs, so we don't end up with a hiccup and have to drop a million dollars and ask the taxpayer to come up with an extra million dollars in any given year. We do a slow and steady process to it, a very methodical process to it. And in year four, five and six, when our debt service drops, I mentioned that that would be a good time in a new bond issue, that, that would be a time that we would add, almost a million dollars of annual debt service payment at that time period, which would still be leveled off of the two point two that we were tracking towards, it would still be two point two. And then the current bond issue of twenty twenty-one would fade out completely in twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two, and the new bond issue would pick up, uh, for that total amount of a net of two point two, or actually it'd still be the one point three, uh, because I would still recommend that we do a capital fund transfer of the same amount that we're doing now, uh, because it's good prudent fiscal management to plan for long-term capital expenses.
I have another question.
Let me just run this by you real quick, so everybody understands. The district deposits a hundred thousand dollars a year in the capital projects fund, correct?
Yes.
So right now, you're gonna pull five million dollars roughly out to pay for these capital projects. So in roughly six years, we will have paid ourselves back for the money that we're going to spend now, without a real estate increase next year.
Correct.
Thanks.
Yeah, real estate tax increases in this district aren't because of capital projects. Real estate tax increase in this district are because of operational expenses that fluctuate from year to year. They are things such as health insurance, teachers contributions, cyber charter increases, contractual increases within our contracts with our staff. Um, operational changes are the reason that cause real estate tax increases. This district has never proposed a project that resulted in a real estate tax increase because of a capital project. The high school project was funded, um, to maximize the plan con at the time. The middle school plan con project was not started until the high school project money actually came in. Two and a half years after that project was completed is when the middle school project started. And when I say started, I mean feasibility started, the planning, the engineering, that started. We had money in the bank. The middle school project, again, eligible for plan con, that money was then put aside, and that was started to use for the first GSA phase one project of this building. That money paid for phase one. We didn't do anything until phase two for the HVC in this building, or the roof for that matter, until the ESSER monies became available. And when the ESSER's monies became available, that was basically, okay, here's our cue, plan con is not coming from the state, it's been seven years, but we do have a funding source from the federal government, a windfall of money, which, if you fall back to the ARRA era, uh, back in, uh, let's see, President Obama in that time, Governor Rendell, um, there were a lot of districts who had the rug pulled out from under, where they used a million dollar federal money that came in, and they used it to backfill their operational budget, and then they had, had to pay for it through substantial cuts. I wasn't at this district at the time, and we had some, we had some serious things we had to make decisions on, cutting staff, and my understanding is here, Northeast did the same thing, I believe they furloughed several teachers at that time.
Thirteen?
Thirteen. Yeah, so when you rely on federal windfall money for operational expenses, that's when you're in a bind. And we were delivered to not use our federal money for operational expenses with the, our ESSER funds. And, uh, you know, there were some, you had to do operation because of all other requirements that we had to put in place to actually function in those years, but the majority of that funding went into the HBA system in, in the elementary building because there is no plan con, there is no state money available for this building. Fortunately, the high school and middle school were still under old programs, they were under the original plan con. Plan con two point O is in theory exists, but there's been no funding put in by the state legislators. But I just wanted to emphasize that, uh, apparently it was not clear, but there are no real estate tax result of this high school phase three GSA project planned. Real estate tax increases are a true result of operational income and expense for a that current year has proposed. Uh, this district does not have any history, nor will I propose that we do that, uh, at this time, it just does not make sense in how we have historically saved for our projects and then proceeded with the projects.
Matt, you got a question?
What level of risk do you think the community has with spending that, that amount of money right now?
The community?
The district, the community.
Well, we still have a million and a half reserve. We still have, uh, funds available for, uh, projects that, that come up. If we had a calamity project, I mean, we'd have insurance money, and if we had a roof failure, we'd have insurance funds for that. There's no large needs that I'm aware of. Uh, the high school renovated in twenty thirteen, um, one roof that, uh, that I mentioned, you know, we do have it within, in the planning for that. Middle school renovated in twenty eighteen, uh, that building's operating fine. Uh, this building, uh, all mechanicals have been updated. Uh, this, this is our, this is our ticking time bomb if you're gonna have one, uh, but it's, we're talking three to five years, we need to be ready with a plan, um, to address... Uh, to address not HAC needs, but we need to still address some building envelopes, some doors and windows, some plumbing aspects. Uh, we do have some, some of those type of infrastructure needs that need to be addressed sooner than later. Uh, the Davis side of the building, uh, some of that infrastructure is, is pretty old. Thanks.
Jeff, I, I think this was asked at the last meeting, but you full called it, being able to spend this money and still having money in reserve if something happens, right?
Yes.
Glenn, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. My question is this. Is there no benefit to us paying off that debt instead of opening up another debt service and paying the interest? There's no save, there's no savings for us taking some of the money and paying off the debt?
That's a, is a great question, Glenn. Um, I, I would say if we were in a situation where we had a high debt, uh, or high interest rate on our debt service, yes, I'd, I'd recommend that. And I've done that in a previous district where we actually paid off, uh, a note early. Um, which causes issues with PDE, they don't have to know how to handle that, uh, when you pay off debt early. Um, it's, it's a unique concept. Um, but the fact that our twenty twenty-one issue, uh, when we bought those bonds, we were at a low of interest rates. Uh, it was a, you can't time the markets of course, but we had very good timing, uh, and very low interest rates. So the, the payoff of them now, I mean, we're, we're, that money that we're borrowing is at a very low rate. But if you're suggesting, uh, we save the money as opposed to rolling into a new bond issue as we, as we progress down a long-term path of what this building needs and the other buildings that we have to do a couple of those projects with them, there's a possibility that we may be able to start that project and not issue the bond issue. Um, it might be later. It may not be as much as what we need to issue, just depending on how far we save for that in advance.
So if I understand you correctly, because I was under the impression that there was going to be a property tax and school tax increase because of these projects. Now you're saying there isn't going to be one because of these projects?
The, if there is a real estate tax increase, it has no correlation to capital projects.
So it's my understanding that we have been saving for these projects, we have allocated money towards these projects and we've been saving towards them multiple years and now it's time to spend that money that we have saved for these projects. Is that, is that proper in saying it or is it?
Yeah, a- as opposed to, uh, running into a time where you need to repair something in your house and, and you have no money at all saved for it. You're gonna finance that, you're gonna put it on a credit card, you're gonna take out a home loan from credit. We're in a position where we have a fund for the purpose of taking care of capital project needs.
Yeah, in regards to business item number three, this is a project that's been put to the back burner for many, many years. Uh, during ICE renovation, I think it was tabled, you know, and I think this is something that, I mean, Jeff feels confident in being able to spend three point seven million dollars still having funds available if something happens, you know, I think that's, I mean, a good thing. Um, but it's one of those projects that I think just keeps getting tabled, 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 you know, eventually as prices skyrocket, it's just gonna cost us more money as we go to do it. So if we, if we wanna do it, it's just time to, to get it done. So and, and Jeff feels confident that we have money in reserve still, even after spending all this money, then I think it's a good time to.
All right, anybody else? So, all right, uh, let's move forward with roll call on passing business item number two.
Uh, Mr. Craig?
No.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Pabilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Dr. Blystone?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Seven one.
All right, motion to vote on business item number three.
So moved.
Move, I have a second, second, a link. All right, any discussion on item number three? See none on the roll call vote please?
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Pabilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Dr. Blystone?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Seven one.
All right, moving on to personnel, Dr. Hertha.
Jim, before we move on, I would like to explain my no vote on item number one.
Go ahead.
I'm still waiting on the names of the people that are doing the checks and balances. Because when they made that presentation, they said there's people in the district, whatever, however it was worded, that do a, a system of checks and balances, but we have no, I still don't know those names. To give just kind of a, a real quick thing of where I work, we have, um, draftsman, can't think of the engineers, that draw up a blueprint. That blueprint is always double-checked and then signed off with a different name. I think it would be great if we knew who was doing these rather than just while we have. I think for the purpose of clarity and transparency that we need to have those and that's why I voted no on item number one.
Appreciate that, Glenn. All right, moving on personnel, Dr. Hertha.
It is recommended that the board approve personnel items number one through five as listed.
Do I have a motion? Oh, board motion, second.
Go ahead.
Second, Nick. All right. Any discussion about any of those? See none, capital call vote. Vote please.
Mr. Pabilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Dr. Blystone?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. Uh, student travel requests, we have nine. All right, we want a staff travel request, we have one, I don't know, we have, uh,
Someone.
Second, a link. All right, any discussion on item one three?
Was this not on the agenda in the la- the last meeting?
No.
No, it wasn't, okay. I thought it was.
I, I think we were going to, then we pulled it before.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
Uh, congrats to Dr. Harper, being accepted.
Absolutely, fantastic. Great, all right, fantastic. All right, Jeff, have the roll call vote please.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Dr. Blystone?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Pabilla?
Yes.
Eight zero.
Congratulations, Dr. Hertha. Fantastic. All right, uh, we have none. Additional educational operational functions, Dr. Hertha.
It is recommended that the board approve the Northeast School District's participation in TIAA athletics for girls wrestling effective the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
All right, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Jane, second.
What's up?
Uh, any discussion? I think this is a fantastic, fantastic opportunity here. This is, this is a great move forward.
She was a state champion a couple of years ago or she was the first.
Yeah, she was like almost a state champion, I mean.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great program.
Yeah, several girls in the community wrestle at a number age. So by the time they get to high school, they cannot continue. Opportunity for us to provide our, our opportunity, especially since one of them is a state champion.
Absolutely, fantastic. All right, uh, Jeff, have the roll call vote please.
Mrs. Rhodey?
Yes.
Mr. Wargo?
Yes.
Dr. Blystone?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mrs. Pabilla?
Yes.
Mrs. Phillips?
Yes.
Eight two. All right, thank you everyone. Um, items for future presentation, discussion and board action, Dr. Hertha.
Um, we have, oh, we've moved a lot of things to our next meeting, so we'll have a lot of student recognition for our next meeting. Um, our Act One index, uh, while we're down a presentation and, you know, a couple retiree recognition and also student recognition again was moved forward, uh, for Road to Gold as well as for our marching band, our thirteen
They're amazing.
champs. So they'll be here next week.
Fantastic. All right, upcoming district events, Dr. Hertha.
Candy cane, uh, lane, I believe that's all, uh, was moved to next week, so I apologize if it got, um, uh, updated on that. So just please be watching, um, our website for those dates. Our choral concert is Wednesday, December eleventh, uh, for, uh, middle school, high school choral concert, December twelfth, seven P M at the auditoriums. Middle school and high school holiday, they have concert Wednesday, December eighteenth at seven P M. And, um, our holiday, uh, sing-along, which they did, they will be showing that live stream as well. They added that as well after the last meeting.
Awesome, fantastic. All right, uh, moving on, public participation, anybody wanna talk about anything if you're at home, star six on you calling in. Uh, Jeff?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question now that, about the speak, I'm just curious what you're speaking about at the conference.
Um, they had asked me, I am actually going to be, um, talking about our profile of a graduate and the work we've been, been working with the community, which is like to our Road to Gold and our school district. So, um, they had several different topics and so it's more on the career education side. So I'm excited, so nervous, but excited. So it's just a small group, you, you get assigned to different, um, groups and so.
Yes, I was here, uh, two board meetings ago and I expressed concern over, uh, the fencing that was going in on the, uh, eastern, uh, property line. I, uh, received a letter that basically says, as you were aware, this, the district recently completed the renovation of the stadium, field, track and lighting system. This was, uh, the letters from, uh, business manager Jeffrey Fox. Final phase of this project is the installation fencing along the district's eastern property, property line. The fencing is being installed for perimeter security as recommended by law enforcement. Now, I understand everybody's trying to keep the place as safe as you possibly can, but I'm sure that your insurance rates aren't gonna go down. I would be absolutely shocked if they did, uh, because you put up a fence. Now, my concern isn't that the fence goes up, I mean, the fence was budgeted, it's paid for, uh, it's being installed at this point in time, I'm not going to stop. I clearly can't stop the project. My concern was, and I shared this with four different board members here as well as the business manager. Uh, my concern was that you're going to put where the fence has been installed three feet from the property line. Anyone familiar with that particular property over there, that development was built fifty years ago. It was even built before the high school was built here. The high school was built in, I think, seventy-nine. So when those houses were built, the gas line, data lines, cable lines were all put in on school district property very close to the perimeter. So because those gas lines are there, the fence has gotta be located in a certain area. But I pointed out that it would make a whole lot more sense if that fence was installed about ten feet further in. Why? Because the gas line, the data line, the cable lines all run there. So if you install the fence on the western, on, on the western section, you don't have to worry about hitting any of those lines, any of those lines. Now, because they've already been installed, you know, and I spoke with, uh, the Northeast heat and light and they said, even if you hit the lines, I guess if you have, you know, i- if you don't have enough oxygen to get down there, you don't have to worry about an explosion or anything of that nature. Nevertheless, I had my wife and pets get out of the house before they poked the holes behind my house. Now, they did happen to hit the cable lines, so people were without, you know, uh, that capacity for a while, so they did make mistakes. Uh, fortunately, it wasn't a gas line. I think what we have to do here is we, we wanna pursue something that is the simplest path. And the simplest path and the safest path was just to move the fence line over. The issue now is going to be, you have three, three feet of property on the exterior perimeter with vegetation growing up over there that you're not going to be able to properly take care of. Uh, or at least I don't know how you're going to get equipment in there to do that. Uh, the safety factor is not an issue. Basically, whether you move the fence over ten feet or left of where it is, it wouldn't have made any difference, uh, it'd actually safer in terms of the activity that's taking place there. So it bothers me that I had conversations with four people, I told, I was told this would be under review and given fair consideration. Uh, two people got back to me, uh, one person didn't honor their commitment and get back to me and one person really hasn't told me the truth. I'm not gonna point those people out, you know who you are. Uh, what's done is done, but I'm really disappointed. You have to remember, you're elected people here and I don't think administrators should make and call all the shots here. I think these things should be reviewed. I don't know how many people went out there and reviewed or looked at the property lines, uh, knew for a fact that there's been fifty years worth of vegetation growing up there. You're now gonna have a situation where you got three, uh, trees that are three feet in diameter and part of that's on school district property. Obviously, you can't scissor the thing in half. Uh, so it poses a bigger problem for you. And so I think if a little, if some courtesy had been extended to me and the neighbors, because the neighbors of all, they, I'm told that they haven't complained. Uh, but I've spoken to most of them and either they're afraid to complain or they've worked for the school district or, um, they have kids going to the school district, they're fearful of retribution. That's a terrible message to send out there, just so you know. Uh, these are citizens of Northeast and they should be extended, uh, a courtesy. I'm also told that, uh, the gentleman at the end of the street, and I certainly wouldn't want, uh, to keep him from doing what it is that he needs to do, but I'm told the property will be sold to him, and I don't know this to be a fact, so that, uh, the fence will circumvent an area that he utilizes. I don't know whether that's the case, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but I think that should be looked into. I don't want that to stop if he's got a, a useful purpose for it and it doesn't interfere with, uh, district property. Uh, I wanna be a good neighbor. But I think there's a, a fairness factor here that, uh, is kinda being overlooked. And I'm disappointed in the, uh, the collective wisdom of the board not to give this, uh, fair consideration. Lastly, I mean, not that this should be a big issue, but, uh, you know, I've lived there for forty years, I'm not the original, uh, builder or homeowner of the house. But, uh, uh, we all have pets, we, you know, we don't bury them in the middle of the yard, we bury them out around the perimeter. And, uh, and you have people out there poking holes in the ground and, and I saw them poke the holes in the ground and they're digging up tree roots and having to move that stagger the, the auger over two feet because they can't drill through that. And so these guys aren't, they're professionals, but, uh, it's, it's, it's an imperfect science. Uh, and so it's just a very sensitive situation because even the guys that are there, and they're doing a, they're, they're doing a bang-up job. But I mean, they're stepping on my property and stepping on, on the grave sites of my pets because they're on my property and that's, they don't know exactly where all the, uh, the dimensions are. So I'm frustrated by the fact that this, uh, collective board, um, didn't pursue, uh, my concerns, uh, 'cause there was certainly plenty of time before this fencing went in. And I'm really disappointed in, uh, that I, I didn't get a response. So I know I've got over my three minutes, thank you for hearing me out.
Appreciate it, Jim.
All right.
Anybody else? See none, have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All right, have a good night, everybody. Easy to drive.